It is Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, West Liberty City Council meeting.
We're laughing at the end.
Oh, am I scaring you?
No.
So it's either one or the other, either I make people think I'm a dork or I like scare them, I guess. So, call to order, the, the meeting for tonight. Present are council members Diane Barak, Omar Martinez, Karen Barrett, yes, Dan and Dominic here, and Jose Zavarras. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
We actually need a motion to amend, okay, the agenda. If you look at the top, amend agenda with letter H, resolution two zero two two zero three one five dash one four, needs to be added, and we need to take off in the new business under eight, letter B, discussion and appropriate follow-up to receive the file of the twenty twenty-two West Liberty Parks and Recreation Facility Plan, presented by Five States.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The, the agenda was approved to be amended by five zero. Alright, so next, we have, we will do the police officer oath of office, Jessica, Officer.
Because of those pictures, I guess.
So if you raise your hand and repeat after me.
I, Jessica Sala.
I guess the Sala.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as police officer.
Discharge all duties as police officer.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. Thank you, welcome to us. Sorry, Diane. That's a long ways away. Alright, so welcome, Jessica, Officer Sala.
Welcome.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I, I didn't grow up around military law or anything like that, so I forget, so I do apologize, no. So next is item four, mayoral equipment, the Library Board of Trustees' appointment of Dave Smith, for your term effective January first, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dave Smith will be approved, appointed to the Library Board of Trustees as of January first, twenty twenty-two.
We have Labor Director Allen's on here, so should make sure he follows up with the board.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion?
There's two C and D, is that because there's two different permits?
Yes.
Because they read the same, I didn't know. So they have one for the pavilion and they have one for the.
The beer.
The beer top.
So they're different numbers, you have sixty-nine and seventy, they're two separate permits.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
All those in favor? Any opposed? The, the consent agenda is approved, five zero, we want to vendor, vendor, sorry folks, vendor voucher please. Any discussion?
I just had a question on light item fifty-nine. I guess I was just confused as to why we were refunding attorney fees, that's all. And so, actually, staff had kind of given me some direction as to what that was, but I didn't know if you wanted to reiterate that.
I will, I'll turn it over to Deputy St. for this offer here, because she works with the invoicing with the Royal Trustees.
Okay, so we had originally worked on refunding some attorney fees. We were originally crediting back their billing, so as they would get filled, we were crediting them during that timeframe. We decided after going through it that it would make more sense just to issue the refund, instead of trying to continually give them small amounts back during that time and break down that balance. So I reached out to Allen, we got a number that matched, and then we put that number on there so that we can start billing fresh, and it will just be thirty-five percent that's due on there.
And so that's the total amount, correct?
Yep, that's the total amount that's going to be due, they had already received some of the credit portion for the last, over the last five months, and then we decided going forward that this is just an easier way to get through it and make everything better.
Any other questions? We have a, a motion to approve vendor voucher claims list number one, and you have one hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Motion. Oh, we already did, oh, that's the reason, sorry. All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, so that passes five zero. Moving right through, folks. Number seven, we'll open it up to public comments and, of course, comments. And maybe just every time, this is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken, so if anybody wants to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments as brief as possible. Public comments? It's a first for us, for me. Anybody online?
Madam Mary posted, and I'll just give a few minutes. Madam Mary, do not see anyone posting in the chat.
Great, wonderful, thank you, so City Council, public comments or correspondence?
I, I have one. Go ahead. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. I had a resident from West Liberty reach out to me, Maria Jimenez, in regards to a potential building that she was told by the Pentecost Church, which she lives next to, with potentially building more sheds or garages. And so I did send that on to administration, so I, I didn't know, Lee, if you wanted to go over that briefly.
So I did visit with Deputy Clerk, she typically handles all of our planning and zoning or our Board of Adjustment meetings, and currently at this time, we do not have anything on for public meetings for the location. Anything previous to that has not been approved. So any going forward, if they're looking to add more accessory buildings, then we would post it for public hearing to review it again. And they have to notify within, is it fifty feet? Yeah, fifty feet radius, if they're going to build, they have to provide notification to their neighbors within that fifty feet radius.
So they'll have to send out notification prior to the meeting to allow people to come forward, or those people can attend the meeting with their concerns as well, so anytime that a application comes in for variance, that is coming, that is going out to them, and then they're able to come in for that.
Is that a meeting with P and D or?
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustments.
So Board of Adjustments handles all of the variance permits that are coming in.
Okay, and then they meet, and then it gets forwarded?
No.
So the board of adjustments. Board of adjustments finalizes that, so if they say yes, then it would be approved, if they say no, then it gets washed away.
Okay, okay.
Typically, the property owner has to prove, and it's also known as an exception or a special exception hardship, they have to provide a hardship while they're asking for the variance. Again, sometimes it can be just based on how a parcel was set, that there's not enough setbacks, and that could be a reason, and that they need to have the building for one reason or another. But usually, you know, we don't see a lot of variances because of the hardship.
Okay, so in other words, nothing has been, all of them have been climbed, yeah. Okay, okay, and then she also had concerns about the trash from the apartments, and it looked like it was starting to migrate as well as accumulate from that.
Yeah, we'll, we still have some work to do on that.
Okay.
But I know we've had some comments before, that sometimes then, and then it blows over into the park areas and things, so we'll be working on that piece of it and follow up with you.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
A local resident living on Morgan and Fourth Street, Kiki Stefan, called me and mentioned that the city did some sealing on the Morgan Street from fourth to fifth, but apparently the sealing didn't quite took on, and, and what they have now is a gravel law. She's wondering whether Adam, the superintendent of streets, and we have something provided lift, she do the work, and I went to see the, the problem, all, all the sidewalks are covered with gravel. You can kick easily the surface of the street, and she suspects on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other City Council comments or correspondence? Okay, City Manager or City Clerk, any comments or correspondence?
I haven't received anything.
So we'll move on to new business, starting with item A, discussion and appropriate follow-up. Yulen Spiegel, Public Theater Company event request on behalf of the West Liberty Children's Festival, September tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Okay, cool, I was the next, wait, but you can.
I think we trust, yeah.
Is it much different than it's been in the past?
A little bit, yeah.
A little bit, and I went through this a little bit.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you see the map, then it definitely looks a little different than it has in the past, and mainly the idea is just to spread out more and get more visibility to the retail shops and restaurants that are on our blocks, so that if we don't have, you know, trucks and vendors right in front of their doors, that they just have greater visibility, and hopefully we'll get a little greater foot traffic. So I'll be working with them a lot more closely on that this year. We're also hoping to make a few changes to things like parking, and you may notice we ask for additional restaurants and additional beverage camps this year as well, because this thing keeps growing and growing. This year's the twenty-fifth, and it's also the regional, the Midwest Regional Puppetry Festival, so the last time we did that, we had about a hundred extra puppeteers in town. So we are not seeing this festival shrinking at all, and we're going to have to expand our efforts to accommodate that growth with the line here in Harton instead of office.
So, that's sweet news.
Oh, well done. I understand that this festival has gained popularity amongst the national, like, spectrum of entertainers.
Yeah, for puppeteers, this is a pretty big deal, and they are just clamoring to get here and find ways to make that happen. This is also the smallest town that holds a regional puppetry festival and has the greatest community involvement of all of them, and it's something that they all really remark on very positively when they come, and are always really eager to come back, bringing everyone they know. So we're expecting, you know, a lot more growth, as we've been seeing anyway, that trend is not going to be slowing down, so.
I noticed that it, you'd kind of switched it a little bit, you're going to go along Calvin Street as third, and rather than third dispense.
And that gets us an extra half a block to, you know, expand things and spread out a little more to create greater visibility for those that are there, we have extra half a block there, and it also gets the puppet center involved, like, it's right in front of our door, which is super useful when we're having the regional. Now, for Fiesta Latina at three o'clock, we're going to close that street off where we usually do. One of the things I really wanted to change this year was just the location of the sandbox, so it would be easier to remove earlier in the day, and we're not there at midnight trying to scoop up sand, that was really unpleasant for me. You know, this is a long day. So, yeah, little, little things, just moving things around in a few different places to hopefully make things a little more accommodating, and of course, more restrooms, you know, we want to increase foot traffic to our local businesses, but not restroom traffic, because we're getting a lot of that. We're going to include a lot more signage and things like that next, to help people understand where they're at, where they need to be and where they shouldn't be trapped at least.
And you also need, you also need barricades too, I assume.
Yes, yep, those were, although we're lax, it's.
Okay. So. And everybody's got a copy of the map, right?
Is it possible, is that possible, that we can move some of the city's toilets?
Um, probably what we would want to recommend is, we would have to look at purchasing or bringing in for rental. It's going to be easier to work with a company to bring in additional rentals if council is, you know, because we have other people out using the parks, so we don't want to take away from, you know, but we can, how many?
We'll probably have to talk about what the attendance looks like versus.
And it'll be more than that this year, because we have all the regional puppeteers.
And I'm still looking for families to take in puppeteers.
Absolutely, and volunteers, 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 hi, volunteers, you're the life-saving kind of individuals, you'll call me.
So, so then, yeah, if, if it's possible, I, yeah, I'd be.
Stephanie, what you have in mind for the, for the reason that we needed to spread it out? And I have copies too, if you guys want copies, but I think we can probably all see the big copy, now my thinking is.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Oh, thank you. Uh, my thinking is that what we do is in front of all those restaurants and businesses that are open, put a little canopy to increase their visibility, maybe a little sidewalk chalk, you know, red carpet style thing, so that it's nice and welcoming, but more importantly, we need signage, otherwise it just looks like a tent, and we don't know why it's there, and they're going to wonder why there's no table, and when the table's going to arrive, so we put signs up that say the name of the business, maybe they're ours, maybe something welcoming like, come on in, we have air conditioning, and a really important sign is that restaurants in here are for customers only, for public restaurants, see the map, so another sign on that canopy will be the map, so that people can know. The trouble is, we have children, and children at Children's Festival, they need to go to the restroom, and by the time they tell you that, it's already five minutes too late. So, you know, parents are just running for the next door, and they really need it to be super obvious, so it's just, it's really all about signage, just marking things more clearly, and making things more accommodating and accessible to those that are already there. Sound good?
And Madam Mary, we also have, so Francisco Martinez is here with.
I'm terrible. Fiesta Latina.
I think we need to vote on this one first, right?
Well, he's.
Oh, they're, they're so bad.
Yeah, so here, so Francisco's here tonight, he did hand me in his event request, but we'll have it on the next meeting, but I just told him if he wanted to talk about, just as Stephanie said, at three o'clock, that transitions over to the festival, and so since we have Francisco here, I just explained to him that, you know, we, we talk about that as a transition. Anything you'd like to say, Francisco, with the, what's the name?
Francisco.
The name, is it Fiesta Latina?
Fiesta Latina.
Fiesta Latina, okay.
Yes. My name is Francisco Martinez. Why we here to ask for also permit for use the street for the dinner Fiesta after, here in the festival. So we try to do the best of the time, and we do something new every year. And, so, I wanted a permit for the city, and so if you have a question for me, I can also, any question for the businesses?
I think we'll see your details next meeting.
Yep.
Right, we'll see your details at the next.
On next meeting?
Meeting, yep, yep. Yeah, I just thought, you know, in case you couldn't get here next time, but I said, you know, since they coordinate very well together, the two, the two organizations have been teaming up for how many years?
Twenty sixteen.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, and it's gone very nicely.
All-day affair.
Yeah, it has increased, it has increased the attendance for both of us, for all of us.
Yeah, and it has, I know that it has, the, the Fiesta Latina has created a name for itself too, all the way to Quad Cities for sure, because I know the people in Quad Cities have expressed interest in coming.
We had tourists last year that came from as far away as the suburbs of Chicago, because they heard this town has a real good party that day. They're really, it's spreading far.
I have a request for Francisco, if you can move the boost stage to the other end of the street, that would be great.
I think on the map, it's listed. Yeah, you're just going to see in the top.
Same, to a certain place we have every year.
Yeah, that's the same place.
These are the best areas of.
And our top, it's the power.
I understand that.
Yeah.
The problem we had last year was that every window in my place was rattling with the level of volume of music. I have a tenant that was just back from the hospital. It wasn't exactly the best situation. The situation, Ryan, sorry, I haven't seen them, but we also will have a lot of time to on this project, and we can do anything in this time. And for the windows, we use normal audio, this is normal. Only, only one festival in the town, I suppose, what you say, the rest of people is happy to everything. So, let's not make any mistake, I love the festival, I love the fact that people enjoy themselves, we can lower the volume a little bit.
I'm also part of Latinos, which is a fancy organization that Francis is, and I understand, you know, the situation. The person that is in charge of the audio is a professional, so obviously he's not going to try to, like, you know, bring the volume up on purpose just because it's a party, it's the normal volume, like, the normal range, you know, as, as you can explain it, you know, and another thing is that it is just one day, you know, it's a one day where we can all come together with Children's Festival, with Latinos, the entire community, and it, we understand, obviously, but we would, you know, really appreciate it, like, this is, it's just one day. You know, and as, I, I feel like as long as there's no, like, damage, you know, and it's very unfortunate, as my dad mentioned, about the tenant, and obviously we didn't know that, you know, but it's just one day, you know, so.
Well, thank you, I mean, all of you, and then we'll definitely have this on the next, with your information as we go through the event on the next meeting, and so tonight, we've got a motion and a second for the Children's Festival.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I thought you were raising your hand. So that passes five zero. So, as noted in the beginning, item B is no longer on the agenda, so we'll move to item C, resolution two zero two two zero three one five dash one one, resolution to approve ambulance bad debt write-off in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. One more second. Discussion?
Yeah, I just, I, I had, and Cherry, I think I copied you on the email, I was just, didn't know the process about, um, our, I mean, I can see on here that, oh, a lot of these issues were because the patient didn't provide a social security number.
Or they were gathered, like, because you can gather them when you go to the hospital as well. I reached out to Sandy afterwards, I always do every year, just to see if we have collected those, and all of these were not collected, so we have to write them off, because I have no ability to actually collect that.
Yeah, and so this is a standard thing for each year, it's not like periodically.
We do it, every year, we typically do it around tax time, because you're either going to get income offset, if somebody wins lottery, wins at the casino, if they are filing their taxes, that's when we're going to get our money. And so even if we are filing them every six months, most of the time, we're not going to get them, so we do it once a year, we do one compound of all of it, and then I work with PCC, they do the actual billing portion, and then they send items to me that say I have income offset on them, and then I go through them, make sure we have all the information that I need to collect them, if I don't have it, then those go on the record.
And then, do those, when we, like, how, how's the process to, for the return? Like, do we get something from the government saying we were able to collect this, and, and do we get anything back, and does that go into the reserve?
So when we, are you talking like when I file with, I have income offset? So the Iowa income offset will send us a check, it comes from the state, it's a check that comes to us for voting, so like, going for ambulance, it's documented on there, like, what they're paying, the portion that they're paying for it, and then those get applied to those bills. So the bad, like, the Iowa income offset bills, those don't disappear, the bad debt ones are the ones that are getting written off the books. Otherwise, they get applied to those accounts to bring them down, to bring that balance down to a zero balance.
Okay.
And that can take several years, I mean, there's one town before I came here that pay fifteen to twenty dollars every year. Like, they're not getting enough return to be able to do it, we also have to pay a seven dollar fee to the state to be able to get those, so when we're collecting, that seven dollars comes off the top each time, and then if it drops below forty dollars, we can't collect that anymore. So if somebody pays and it drops to thirty-nine dollars, then at that point in time, that's another write-off.
Okay. During the ambulance board last Sunday, we talked a little bit more to Sandy, and she was wondering if the council had considered using third-party collection agencies, and she had talked to one person, and she understands we have to do a big process, and they had to go through committee and stuff like that, but is that something you all know that you've considered in the past, or something we might be able to look for?
So that was actually discussed back in the initial conversation with PCC about having the possibility of having the third-party collect. We don't really have a big enough service, and we did talk to PCC on the phone last week, I think it was Friday. Uh, we talked to them, and we don't really have a big enough need for a third-party collection, because, one, the items that I'm unable to collect, they're not going to be able to collect for them either, because if you don't have a social security number on somebody, you can never collect those, and as you can see on that listing, majority are them, are because of that. And then you also have deceased customers who don't have states, out of state, we can't collect on those because they don't file an Iowa income offset. And she said that we don't have enough that are out of state to be able to have that third-party, because that, out of state, is where that third-party would become. Um, and she said that we don't have enough that are out of state to be able to have that third-party, because that out of state is where that third-party would come in beneficial.
Okay.
Plus, isn't there a cost associated with that as well?
Yeah.
Why, you know, yeah.
It would not end up. Us to do it, it's just something that we file each year.
It would end up costing us more.
Correct.
For not getting anything.
Yeah, and as you, um, can see on there, we, like, the portion that I'm sending, sending to Iowa income offset is twenty-three thousand. The amount of the writing off is over seventy-two thousand. So when you're looking at that, that twenty-three thousand, it might take us ten, fifteen years to collect all of that, sometimes we won't even get that back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's no guarantee we're gonna get, uh, all of that twenty-three thousand.
There are still a lot of outstanding, but people have balances that are still remaining, um. People haven't paid anything, because they haven't had taxes, or they haven't been working, or whatever it may be. So those may be outstanding for years to come, it's not something where I send it off, and then that money comes back to us right away. And I want that to be made aware that, even though I'm sending it, it doesn't mean we're getting it.
We're getting it.
So no matter how many times I send Iowa income offset, it doesn't mean we're gonna get those funds.
Because that's, that's only in the case that there's money due to the individual.
Correct.
And generally, there is.
And also, I need you guys to know that Iowa income offset has a lot of things, so let's say people have utility bills that are filed out there. Um, they have bills through the University of Iowa hospitals, if those are out there on Iowa income offset, and they're out there before I put an offset on there. Those, those entities get paid before you. So that's also something to keep in mind, that just because I put it out there, doesn't mean there's not other funds that are due to other agencies, you know?
And I just, correct me if I'm wrong, we're probably going to be revisiting this again for utility bills.
Correct.
Because we have, we do the same thing for utility bills.
Yeah, and I think Sammy had mentioned, the person that she talked to, just because she wanted to know how the service worked and stuff, had worked with lots of. Um, cities in, in Iowa already, and they actually don't collect a service fee unless they collect. And the city that they work with add that amount to the patient as a service, so actually, it wouldn't cost us anything. And, um, they have like a two or three hundred percent collection rate or something like that, but. Um, like I said, this was, it was just really interesting, I don't know if you wanna add anything, Omar?
What, it's interesting how it works, because it's not, it doesn't run just under the public safety, it's for the community as a whole.
Yeah, utility bills, um, tickets, everything, they would collect.
If you guys want any more information.
PCC?
No, it's, it's another, it's another third-party that work, it's some municipality thing, and I can get the name of it, but I know we, there's a bidding process and stuff like that too, so. We didn't wanna look very deep into it.
Yeah, I don't know which.
Well, also, that seven dollars is charged to our customer, just so you're aware. Oh, it is, okay. Seven dollars that we send to Iowa income offset, that is charged to our customer, so if they are paying, they owe two hundred and fifty dollars, let's say. I send them a letter that says you owe two hundred and fifty dollars plus a seven dollar processing fee, that comes from them. So the city isn't paying that. They, it's included on that bill, like, for the customer themselves. What I'm saying is every time I file it, each year when I'm filing these, that customer gets another seven dollars.
Got it.
Seven dollars, not the city themselves. So that's definitely something that we're, that's beneficial, is that we're not getting charged that money, the customer who has paid it is. But again, they have to, I have to collect that money.
Right.
In order to pay those bills down, and if we're not collecting those, those monies, then they're still outstanding. Those bills are still out there with uncollected funds.
So is this an accumulated list that, that, there could be somebody that's on this list that was on last year's list, only it's minus five dollars or whatever? So it's a new, it's a new, totally new list of people every year.
Yep, and.
And that's what I thought, but I wanted to double check.
Dana had asked in the email, um, if it is getting higher, if it's getting lower. It's pretty much the same, so in the previous years, like, going from, when I first took it over, I did it, started it in eighteen, but I did sixteen, seventeen, eighteen altogether. I did one big, like, lump sum, and the write-offs started like twenty-two thousand, then twenty-one thousand. Last year was the best year that we had had, and it was five thousand, and most of those, again, were, you know, social security numbers. So, our income offset amounts are about the same as well, um, when you're looking at everything. In comparison year to year, it's following a chart that, yeah, that's, it's basically following the trend on that, um.
Trend of, true.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to, um, and then there's another part, just so that you guys are aware, so that there's a little bit better understanding. The write-offs that I'm talking about are write-offs that we cannot ever collect, because we don't have the information gathered. There are other types of write-offs where the insurance company only pays a certain amount, we can never collect anything additional on that. And in just three years, we're almost at four hundred thousand dollars.
That the insurance wouldn't pay?
That the insurance would not pay, so just so you guys are aware, like, and when people are talking funds-wise. Those are funds we're never gonna receive either, because we have contracts, obviously, with Medicare, Medicaid, veterans, and stuff like that, they're only gonna pay a portion. So somebody might have an eleven hundred dollar bill, their bill's been eleven hundred dollars, insurance writes seven hundred dollars right off the top of that, and we get four hundred, so.
You normally got one, like, ten or fifteen percent.
It's a very minimal amount, um, and if there's more, if you guys have more concern and questions and stuff like that. My recommendation would be to have a work session with PCC, so you can kind of understand the reports and stuff a little bit better, um. But right now, we are sitting really good, our percentage for uncollected, like, our EJ report. Eighty-eight percent of that is within thirty days. Most insurance companies won't even pay within forty-five. So you're talking, when you're looking at EJ reports and stuff like that, it might be a hundred and fifty thousand, but you have to think, right, in that first zero to thirty days. That's all the new billing that just went out, that we do not have.
Right, okay, thank you, Sherry, this was really helpful.
Yeah. Look, Matt and Mary, you have some comments, um, do you want to take them, or?
Uh, you know, I was looking, and I am so sorry, I cannot, I cannot read them on that screen.
Um, so Tammy, she was just mentioning, um, and again, we don't have the information that was provided at the ambulance, so we don't. For Sherry and I, we don't know what was discussed, or who. I don't think that, um, for Sherry and I, we're, from processing the receipts, the city, we're not saying that it's not. Something that we don't wanna look at, we're just working with the organization that does the billing, and taking their. You know, their expertise, and they're saying, you know, this is what can't be collected, um, but we're not, we're not saying that we'd be against working with another, but again. You know, we don't have that information, so we don't, we don't know, we'd have to take a look at it, and then that would be, again, then. A council decision if they wanted to enter into a contract with another third-party. Well, I think what was, what I was more intrigued to learn more about was that they could. Basically, collect for, on a resident level, if they had outstanding parking tickets. And utility, and billing, and ambulance billing, like, they could collect separately, so they keep it in different funds. Um, and then send us what they've collected and stuff like that, but. So I, I see like a bigger picture, not only ambulance billing, but maybe something that we could look into to help with the offset of a city, but if it's not. So much is a problem, then it's not really worth the effort, so I guess I would just need to know.
Get more info.
Yeah.
Probably have a work session.
And for parking tickets, we have a twenty eighty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have other agreements for collecting, so just like in the income offset level. We have a county twenty eighty agreement where we can, um, they're a lien, um, on property.
And on their, like, when they go to renew their license or tags.
Okay.
Like that, yes, so we, we have those programs, and then same with utility, we have, yeah, we can, we can do a lien on the, the property as well.
Okay. And then I see a, a question, who gets, and it was actually, uh, one that I was gonna ask myself, so what happens with the write-off, what is that?
Just goes away, nothing.
There's nothing.
Gone, there's nothing.
Yeah, nothing to collect, so it's just.
City doesn't get it, the ambulance doesn't get it.
And it's not like a tax thing, or anything like that, it's just gone.
And that's the same thing with those insurance write-offs, those are gone, the insurance writes it off, we never collect.
Okay.
And you'll do the same with utilities, you, you may have utilities that you're out of, that you know that you're never gonna collect, and that's just money that never gets paid to anybody.
Let me keep in line, and, you know, there's, there's administrative costs that, the work that goes behind this, so I mean, there is.
Even working with the vendor.
There's, there's that loss that's.
It's staffing to do this process, too.
Unfortunately, write-offs are just part of doing businesses in this department, it's just part of.
Yeah. Yeah. And I will say, I, I, in my, uh, in, in my career, I've worked with a lot of collection agencies in my career, not in my personal life. Um, but, uh, they, they can, they all say they have that five hundred percent collection rate.
It's like a sales tactic.
It's a, yeah, so it's a statistics thing, but they can kind of play with the numbers, so let's keep that in mind, too.
And then, just to, I think the other question was, is where, when we are able to receive money from income offset. So when we received it into the ambulance fund, just as we would if they were paying the bill.
Okay.
Um, so it wouldn't.
It just doesn't happen very often, it sounds like.
It doesn't, um, last year, we received one check, and that included utility billing and income offset.
So, whenever those bills get sent out, does PCC do initial billing to the, to the customer, and then you guys follow up with?
We have no billing, we have nothing to do with the billing, we only do receiving, so PCC does first, second, third, fourth. After that, then it goes to that Iowa income offset page, and then they send it, and we do that once a year. So we do nothing with billing, we do not handle any of the billing in-house, it's only receiving.
Yep, um, if it's, if it's cool, if we, um, keep moving forward on this, I think a work session is a good idea, so that. Particular for those folks.
I think you, yeah, I think we can talk about it after March.
I know we need to.
Yeah. So.
So we will.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, thank you, otherwise I would have forgot. Um, go down resolution two zero two two zero three one five dash one one. Um, council members, Zachary, Dominguez, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so it passes five zero, and so this kind of goes along with it, item D, resolution two zero two two zero three one five dash one two. A resolution to approve ambulance debt submission to the Iowa income offset program in, not twenty-three thousand, one dollar and no cents.
Motion.
Second, okay, um, council members, Zacharys?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, passes five zero as well. I figured we got the discussion out for that item with the last one, so I didn't hold for discussion on that one. Um, we'll move on to item E, resolution two zero two two zero three one five dash one three. Resolution to approve payment with Northway well in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents for well number two restoration progress, project.
My goodness.
We have a motion.
A motion to approve it.
I have a question for, I've seen a lot of, everything is done without well.
Finally?
No, this is a, my understanding from the discussion last week is, this was some work that the city approved back in twenty.
Yep.
And.
Rushing, rushing up.
There was some work, and it happened in Pay Tour, and that may be part of the reason why they didn't drag it. So, I think once we get this paid, whether it's starting to turn, I would hope they will get here to do the rushing of the well, determine. You know, based on the contract that you approved last fall, which included the doghouse gate, and then the brushing to find out whether that well's gonna be. Sufficient to, you know, put back in the service force.
And just to be clear, the city had not received this.
City had not received the invoice, and that's why it happened to pay, so, and I don't believe that Leo had received it either, it just said that.
So they were, they were, we were mind reading, and we knew exactly that. We had the. Um, does this include the testing as well, or no, the testing requirements?
So it was if, and, um, with, it was attached, Leo can answer, but the, the document that you have. Um, it explains, and it has it itemized, um, what the, what the amounts were, and the July fourteen, twenty twenty document. Was attached with your resolution.
Water quality samples, so that must be the testing.
Can I, can I explain?
Yes, please do.
Okay, um, when, when we did our study, we, we had a meeting with the DNR, and we asked the DNR to please, um, review. They told us, first step, take water quality samples, if those were successful and passed. Typical water quality standards, then go to the second step, which would be to clean and re-televised the casing. So this water quality was that first step, it was done, now we're moving to the cleaning and casing, which supposedly they're gonna start next week.
Uh, any more discussion needed for that before? Good, council members.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
That also passes five zero, we will move on to, uh, item F, rescheduled budget work sessions, set the date for March seventeenth at. Five PM, five PM. At Wee Wee. St. Patty's Day, come on.
We're in a time.
What's that? No, I'm, it's a joke, sorry.
My life will tell you.
Budget work session.
Second.
Not the considerable way to.
Is that considerable, okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes five zero, five o'clock, March seventeenth, Wee Wees, where are you from? We'll have some beer. Um, item G, rescheduled special meeting, public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget hearing. And set the date for March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two at six PM, is this also Wee Wees here?
No, this can be, this will be.
This will be here, yeah.
And it shouldn't take, it won't take very long to.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, item B passes five zero. Um, resolution H, resolution, or number eight, or letter H, resolution two zero two two zero three one five dash one four. A resolution proposing the disposal of City of West Liberty Police Department equipment by donations on behalf of the freedom, freedom fighting efforts in Ukraine.
Motion.
Discussion. No, did you hear about it?
I did get an update on this, um, the lieutenant colonel that is the contact for this said that it's currently on hold. They've gotten, um, information from several departments in the state. The next step was to collect it and get it to their, um, National Guard Station in Des Moines. They said, hold off, we're waiting for more, I think they've gotta do more logistical setup, probably. So I just wanted to make sure that if they will accept it, that we, the Twitter could not participate.
So we can, we can not and.
You go ahead and approve your request, and then if, if they're willing to take it, then we'll send it, if they end up changing their mind, cheaply.
And this is a governmental organization that's asking for, or it's not outside?
Yeah, it came from the National Guard to police departments, or, um, I'll say retired ballistic equipment. So ballistic vests that officers get are rated for five years, they're warranted for five years. After that, they become unusable for using at work, so we do have some of that stuff that's in the garage, that I was actually looking for a good way to.
Dispose.
Repurpose.
Repurpose.
Uh, and when this came up, I figured, it's, it's as good a thing as any, so I just wanted to see if, if they do end up accepting it, then I wanted them to know if we could go ahead.
Because after five years, then we have to, we have to move.
I can't, yeah, I can't use it anymore, and some departments use it, um, mounted inside of squad car doors, just as extra protection. It's not anything warranted, because you can buy ballistic armor for inside of car doors, but that's sometimes what they do to repurpose it, um.
Council chambers, by council desks, I've seen it repurposed there as well.
Yeah, so there's other ways you can get rid of it, and there's, there's just not much to do with it after it, after it goes out of warranty, but. Um, when this popped up, I knew that we did have some pieces, and that should be laid out of exactly what we have, there's not a lot of it. There's not a lot of it, but if it can be used, it's a great way for us to recycle.
Yeah.
There's nothing else.
Okay. All right, uh, is a consent or roll call, sorry.
Roll call.
Thank you, sorry, I lost my place.
Your resolution, yeah.
Um, uh, so we'll vote on, on item H, um, uh, Councilman Zacharys? Are we ready?
I uh, I abstain from this vote.
Okay, you can abstain from it because you have no personal gain. Councilmember Zacharys, so it's either yes or no.
I will say.
Yes. That's a move there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That passes four one, the consent vote being separated. Item I, resolution two zero two two zero three one five dash one five. A resolution to set the date for a public hearing April fifth, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty PM, accelerating Iowa Economic Development Authority loan in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for nuisance abandoned property remediation fund located at one zero one one North Columbus Street, West Liberty, Iowa.
Move to a group.
Second. And it's a roll call.
Do you want any information on it? This was Travis Shields project, which is some commercial space and apartments, steel tire shop across from from Gary, from Gary BP. Uh, we have an initial, uh, we lead an initial grant amount of around four hundred and thirty-one thousand, it just wasn't going to cash flow. So um Ken Brooks, we directly went back to the state after we'd met with the recipient of the funds and his, his banker, they decided the two hundred thousand probably worked better to cash for it. The grant does come to the city, there will be an additional agreement um that we will have with the developer to assure that he makes the payments. Uh, originally it was set up for quarterly payments uh for over five years. Now it's a five payments for five years and we done in December of twenty-two, the first payment due and it's a no interest loan.
Any other questions? Comments? This is a roll call vote, Councilman Zacharys?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Councilwoman.
Yes.
Okay, that's five zero. Passes five zero, um, item I. Two people. We'll move on to reports. Um, I don't have the second page on my agenda, sorry. Oh, no, that's okay, it is, it's city and we'll start with the city engineer. Oh, sorry, I, I was, I didn't know.
All right, thank you. Um, thank you. As I said earlier, I did talk with Tom from Northway, he's their project manager. He did assure me they would be out next week to start uh doing the well cleaning of, of well number two. Um, I tried to nail him down on an exact day, but he, he was, he was uh being a little um difficult to pin down. But I, I believe by about Wednesday, they should be started. Next one is, we did run into a few hiccups on the rainbow mark and um Maxon Street project. We, we met with the Streets Committee last week. And basically the electrical, looks like there's a lot of problems in that area. Ed likes to say that it's a add-on to an add-on, meaning it's been kind of cobbled together. So we had talked to BHMG today about what it would take to, to, to not cobble it together. And their biggest problem is they're keep getting, they cannot get equipment, they can't get poles because of the pandemic for twenty-four weeks. So we're in the process now of, of coming up with some alternatives. Could we possibly do the road and then come back and do the trail later when the, when the electrical stuff is ready? And what is the cost of that? So we probably need another two or three weeks here to get our arms around that and then get back to you. So that's kind of a hiccup we didn't, we didn't see exactly coming.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Um, how, we've done other projects in the city, how did we not know that it was a cobble of a cobble? Why is that such a surprise?
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. So, so what we do is when we do the civil project, we pretty much look at, okay, what are we going to do with the road? And then we, we come up with a grading limit. Anything that's within our grading limit, then we look at. And so that in this case, there were seven poles that were in our grading limit. To me, they look like seven poles that could be relocated and, and they can be relocated. But that leaves on both ends of the project, the cobble. It's not like you would have to do it, but it might be the time to do it. So that's why we'd like a couple of more weeks to come back to you and say, here's the plan, if you wanted to go forward with a, what I would call not a relocation of electrical anymore, but in a electrical improvement.
And Leo, correct me if I'm wrong, but that cobbled up area that Ed was referring to is actually across the road from the park on the other side. So it's a matter of not only relocating on the side of the park, but it's fixing across the street.
There's two spots where it's been taken across the road. And then back across the road, they're add-on electric is what it is. They, we've added on to original.
Right.
So we first crossed the road out there and.
More times than it needs to be.
And the discussion we've had is that if we're looking at new subdivisions out there, that we should spend the money now and do this right so that when we're ready to add those subdivisions on, the power will be set up properly like it should be.
Yeah.
And so it, it's not just a matter of moving the poles, you know, setting them back five feet or whatever. It's basically a total rebuild of the whole electric out there is what it's going to end up being.
And, and I guess, and that's a surprise, like, why are we just not finding out about that?
The rebuild of the electric was somewhat of a surprise. The, the relocation of the poles was not a surprise, but having a twenty-four week delay is a huge surprise because I just did a project in Leclerc this year in Mid-American was able to relocate the poles, but probably because they were bigger and had poles on, on hand. They didn't have to go buy them. So that, that's, that's the catch on the, on the poles, but the.
What are electrical people need, engineering needs to do on that out there?
And, and your electrical engineers are not us, it's BHMG and we did, we did meet with them today.
Yeah, great.
We're probably looking at a spring project rather than this summer or fall.
Yeah.
Spring twenty-three.
I tend to agree with you, Diana, but I think, I, you know, I think Leo and I had talked a little bit about looking at the road and then coming back and doing the trail. I just think that's a mistake.
I think we need to do it all at one time and, but I think it's going to be, it's, we're going to have to shove it back so that our engineers can do the electric and get that set up and do it right. And I think it's going to be spring before we're ready to do that.
If you want to do it as one project, that will be the case.
Thank you, thanks Leo.
But, you know, by doing that, that will allow like the project of that as, as well as the BIC subdivision. You know, they, they need to go and have to work around construction and us keeping the lane open this year for them. At, at least the Dutton project should be able to be completed.
Good.
You know, uh, I would imagine that, you know, by the time that we get started next year, then hopefully most of the heavy lifting for BIC is done and maybe a house.
That was going to be my next question is how that affects that, so.
Shouldn't, shouldn't it shouldn't really affect them because they've got a, what I would call a semi-paid surface area, kind of a silver road, you know, have the attachment. There, you know, they'll, they'll put theirs in and there'll be some, probably a little bit of stuff will be tried in our piece as we come back.
And, and they will have power fed, fed to them, it'll just be coming off of the existing, not, not anything new.
Okay, great. But in the right way, off the existing.
You know, but.
A bad joke. No, I just want to see like.
No, you talked about being a big problem, you know, and I learned this lesson a long time ago is that, you know, councils at that time probably made the best decisions they had based on the money that they had. And that's why we've got, we've got it. We have an opportunity to correct it now and that's why I, I tend to agree with Diana. Let's wait, let's do it right, we do it once.
Great. Yeah, okay, thanks for answering those.
All right, thank you.
City staff minutes?
May I have a question after the answers?
I'm just, the, the only thing we have to add is, oh, yes. Um, you, you told, this is going to reach out to you.
Um, Ken Brooks, Executive Director, we, we had originally had our budget meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth. Um, he was wanting to kind of tag onto that to do a post-session. And uh, it's a meeting that we really need to have, so um, we'd like to know your availability to do a special meeting at the we we be building that night on twenty, twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth and sixteenth.
You can't, you can't call so strong.
I can tell you after we go off the record privately, but I can't say.
It's just a confidential.
We're talking March twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Is it going to take um only an hour?
An hour or so.
And you said six o'clock or five o'clock?
Six PM.
Okay.
So you want a motion for that?
Since it's not on the agenda.
Can you just give us a consensus that you're willing to meet, we'll, you know, post it.
Cause I'll have time to, I'll have time to get it posted.
Okay.
I'm available. Is that everybody then? Anything else? Anything else needs? We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, folks.